Good evening. The time is now 6:30 PM on Monday, January 8th, 2024. I call the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom, allowing remote public participation. All members of the board are present in person tonight. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Members of the board are in person tonight. I am Joe Pato, the board chair. Sitting on my right is Vice Chair Susie Barry, and on her right is Joe Hay. Sitting on my left is Doug Lucente, and on his left is Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff are Jim Malloy, the town manager, Kelly Axtell, deputy town manager, and also joining us remotely is Kim Katzenbach, Select Board Executive Clerk. Tonight's meeting is a regular meeting of the board, and we will be taking general public comments. Before we start the open public comments section of our meeting, I would like to remind all participants that we are neighbors and are working together for the best interests of our community. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or reference to motives. Open public comments are for items not otherwise covered on our agenda. Comments are allowed for up to 10 minutes. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Members of the board will neither comment nor respond other than to ask clarifying questions. Remote attendees who have dialed in by phone should press star nine to be recognized or click on the raise hand button if using the Zoom application. When you are recognized to speak, please state your name, address, and any relevant board or committee affiliation. Tonight, I'll be using the Zoom timer function, which displays the remaining time for a speaker. This is a two-minute countdown timer. When the timer reaches zero, I will interrupt and allow the speaker to finish their sentence but not proceed further. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment about an item that is not covered elsewhere on tonight's agenda? I'm seeing a member of the public in the room approaching the microphone, and I'm now checking online. So we'll begin in the room.
Don McKenna, 9 Hancock Street. While I recognize that the snowstorm just happened this weekend, I did want to bring to the attention of the board that the work done on the roundabout was less than satisfactory and caused all kinds of traffic problems. I particularly want to mention that after all the work that was done to try and create a safe driveway for my husband and I to exit our driveway from, the town did not plow to the edge of the curb. They plowed a good four or five feet into the middle of the roadway, making it even more hazardous for us. And while we shoveled as much as we could, we thought for sure today somebody would come by and check how it went. I know there were piles placed at the end of some of the entryways during the plowing. They did come back yesterday and did a little better job with that. But I really expected that at least somebody from the DPW would have come by today to see how it went, what happened. And I will say the most upsetting thing for me personally, as you all know, I'm very concerned about the crosswalk that was put in between my house front door and our driveway. And that is now a sheet of ice. After my husband shoveled the sidewalk so that I could safely traverse that path as best as possible, the snowplow came along the sidewalk and made a mess of it again. And so it's now all iced over. So I don't know how we're going to resolve this, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. I know we're going to be discussing the whole project at a future meeting, but this was new and not part of that, so I wanted to bring it to your attention so we can fix it before the next storm and do what we can. I know it's going to warm up later this week, but it doesn't help the sidewalk right now until it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else in the room, nor anyone raising their hand on Zoom. So we will proceed with the meeting. Select Board announcements and liaison reports, colleagues. Tonight, we have one member reporting the packet. Are there additional announcements or verbal comments? Seeing none. Mr. Malloy, do you have a town manager's report this evening?
I do. First, what I would like to do is introduce Dana Bickelman as our new Director of Human Services. She's replacing Melissa Interess, who left us a few months ago. Dana has worked for the Town of Belmont for the past several years and is currently their Council on Aging Director. Or I'm sorry, she's not currently their Council on Aging Director. She's currently our Director of Human Services. She was previously the Council on Aging Director in the Town of Belmont. She also worked for the City of Marlborough. Dana's bachelor's degree is in Special Education Human Services, and she holds a master's degree in Public Administration. She started a week and a half ago on December 27th. And so here she is. If you wanted to maybe stand up and say hello.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here, very excited. It's been a wonderful few weeks. Jim and Kelly have been amazing, and I'm excited to continue meeting people. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Bickelman. And I'll say that traditionally, we will give new senior members of town staff a town pin. Unfortunately, I didn't find them today, so I'm going to offer you mine because I know where to get them.
Thank you.
And I had a couple of other things. First, I wanted to note that the Public Works Department was awarded Communications Award from the New England Waterworks Association for their communications regarding the AMI system. We have installed the second water bottle filling station along the bike way thanks to Cal and our Public Works Department working together on that. And the town, for the first time since I've been here, has won an award from the Master Municipal Association, their annual town report contest. It's third place. And the last thing is just that, well, actually, I have two other things, but the last minor thing is that we receive 460, we'll be receiving $463,000 through the Fair Share Amendment, and that's the portion that goes to infrastructure improvements. Oh, one other short thing. The Economic Development Department and visitor center website has, their new website has launched. So the bigger thing that I wanted to talk about real quick was the fiscal year 25 budget process. We're hoping to wrap it up this week. It's been, as the board is aware, another difficult year in balancing the budget and providing funds for our program improvement requests. As we have continued to make adjustments to the budget to provide some funding for PIRs, we've had other unexpected increases. For example, we originally built the budget around an 8% increase on our health insurance cost, which we thought was being conservative because in the past it's come in between 5% and 7%. We were informed by the GIC that it would be between 8% and 11%, and that we should be budgeting 9.5%. So after making adjustments, we thought we'd have about $100,000 to $150,000 for funding some PIRs. But with the GIC change, we ended up with $10,178, which doesn't fund a whole lot of PIRs. So the week in between Christmas and New Year's, I took two days where I really tried to just focus on going through the entire budget line item by line item to determine whether there were some budget reductions that could be possibly made throughout the budget. And I sent those out to the senior managers to do an additional review of items that I had identified so that the board's aware of the scope of what I identified. I identified about $700,000 in potential budget reductions that could then be used to fund program improvement requests. My thought was that, you know, over time, we end up sometimes leveled funding budgets even if we don't fully expend them. It's just the way it happens. And a lot of times, due to changes in practices or changes in technology, we no longer are doing things the same way we were at some point in time, but we don't reduce our budgets accordingly. And so that's what I was looking for when I looked through actual spending trends over the past several years and every single line item. And so that has gone back out to the senior managers. I had until the end of business today to review them and get it back to me. Some have made different adjustments. They've moved money differently, but came up with the same dollar amounts. And I'll be finalizing that probably tomorrow. I have taken the information and the discussion the board had on PIRs as well as the senior manager's ranking of the PIRs, and I now have a overall ranking of those PIRs, which I shared with the senior managers when I sent out the proposed budget reductions. And how each one would be funded, because some are general fund, some are general fund, one-time, general fund, ongoing. Some I'm going to recommend is ARPA. There's one that comes out of the Notice of Content filings for Conservation. There's some different funding mechanisms. So that should all be put together. It's really the last piece that we're trying to finalize on getting the budget completed for this year. We do believe we'll have it done by the end of this week. And so hopefully, we'll have it to you in time for you to have a chance to review it before we go over the white book at the upcoming work session. So we are getting there. I don't know that we'll quite hit 700,000. I think it'll be somewhere a little bit south of that because there's a few things that I'm not comfortable making changes to, that some of the senior managers changed some of the reductions, and I don't think that we should be making those. So, but I do think it'll be somewhere north of 500,000, but less than 700,000. So it's looking a little bit better, and I think it gives us an opportunity to do that kind of deep review of our budget that we haven't done in a while.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Some follow-up questions from the board, Ms. Barry.
So if I followed that correctly, it sounds like there should be roughly, are you saying 500,000 for PIRs?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second thing, you and I have this conversation all the time, but for those sitting in the audience, watching at home, it's not that the town doesn't have money. It's based on policies that this board and others have agreed to as to us putting a significant amount of money away into the capital stabilization fund. That's why we're seeing this issue.
It's partially.
Okay, so I think we need to make sure we tell that story every single time so that people are aware that the high school project is coming and it's going to cost a lot of money, and we're trying to save for it ahead of time.
Yeah.
So go ahead, and then I have one more. I thought you wanted to amplify on partially. Yeah, no, go ahead, and then I have one more.
Just to amplify a little bit, there are, it's because of that policy. It provides less revenues to both the town and the school on an ongoing budgetary basis. We also had other things over the last year. We had a couple of large labor contracts. And then we had some sanitation costs. The bulky items and white goods that we had budgeted revenues for last year, we didn't do that. And so that had to be assumed in the budget as well as the curbside composting program that we did last year and funded out of ARPA. And so those all had to be assumed into the budget this year as well. And so it's a combination of that which made our expenditures higher and then the fact that we have this policy of putting money into the capital stabilization fund, and that makes our revenues lower, and that's put us kind of in this tight position. I don't see us having the same kind of issue next year because we don't have any really large outstanding labor contracts right now. We have one of the smaller units. It's the only one that's in negotiations right now, so it should be a little bit better hopefully next year.
Okay, and then this is a really big one. So I'm just going to throw it all into one. So where we are is, you went through the budget, senior managers went through the budget. You're looking to find some money so you can fund some PIRs. And there's no other thing, no other unexpected things hanging out there, any undone contracts, anything like that? Are we copacetic with the school department?
We should be with everything. In fact, the school department probably is getting what they're seeking and maybe even some additional based on how we do our revenue allocation model.
Okay. This is all very good news. Thank you.
Ms. Hay?
I just, I agree with Ms. Barry's comments, and I also just wanted to say thank you because I think this is exactly the sort of thing we've talked about in goal setting and other places, where we've talked about really wanting to take sort of a forensic look at some of the things that are legacy spending. So I'm grateful, I think, on behalf of the board as well. So thank you for that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. And we will have an opportunity to talk much more about the budget next week during the work session. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, we have 10 items on the agenda. The 10 items are, one, to approve Select Board Committee reappointments. Two, to accept Select Board Committee resignations. Three, to approve Select Board meaning minutes. Four is Class II license renewals. Five is Common Vittler license renewals. The sixth is entertainment license renewals. Seventh is inholder license renewals. The eighth is to approve a letter to legislators with supporting real estate transfer fee legislation that we previously reviewed. Nine is approve updates to the outstanding youth award process. And 10, approve the and sign Eagle Scout commendation letters. Colleagues, are there any items on the consent agenda you would like to consider individually? Seeing none, I move the consent agenda as submitted in the agenda packet. Ms. Barry, for a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. It is unanimous, five zero. Thank you. We'll move now to items for individual consideration. The first item tonight is to discuss the use of town-owned building at 173 Bedford Street and to review the consensus that was obtained at the summit in December, I believe, or November, end of November.
Late November.
Mr. Malloy, if you could start us off.
So what I've done is I've just attached the presentation that was provided for that summit meeting as well as the space needs analysis that was undertaken. And as boards are aware, I sent the board a memo that outlined the pros and cons of the different proposals, whether it was renovating the central admin office in place, leasing space, or renovating 173 Bedford Street. And our recommendation was to renovate 173 Bedford Street, which was what was then presented on, in the November summit. And at that point, there was a general consensus from all parties, the Select Board, School Committee, the Appropriations and Capital Expenditures Committee, to move forward with that course of action. As we finalize the budget and all the town meeting warrant items, we just wanted the board to review that and confirm that that was the direction that you wanted us to take going into the town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. And colleagues, I want to underline that this is to reaffirm the consensus. There are still open questions as we move forward. This is not a final decision on just the process, but it is to reinforce and make clear that we are choosing to plan to move the central office, the school central office, out of Old Harrington and into 173 Bedford Street as an interim step. And that the old Harrington space would be raised and converted into fields. The motion in the packet talks about the Recreation Department having control of those fields, but that's not town departmental ownership. It's control of the fields for use. And the space at 173 Bedford Street is still open for, you know, looking to see how we will evolve it over time. But we want to make sure that there is no second guessing as to if we can proceed now with making the plans to start the move out of Old Harrington and to make available space for fields, knowing that the high school project is going to reduce field availability for a fair amount of time. Are we all clear? Mr. Sandin?
Thank you. So I wanted to address the timing of the consensus that we've developed. So what you've said, I agree with. I think what we have, what we have been talking about is the decision to raise Harrington School, move central administration out of the school, allow fields to be built. And for me, the question that was raised during this consensus was what's going to happen to the school administration folks? Are they going to move into 173 Bedford Street? Or are we going to lease another property? And at the time, the question was asked, how much would it cost to lease a property? And how much did that compare to the cost that we are holding for renovation? And at the time, we were presenting $6 million for renovating 173 Bedford Street. And the presentation to the team in November was that we thought it was going to cost something on the order of $5 million to lease space. And so that was the basis on which the consensus was developed, that we should be moving forward with renovating 173. And since that point in time, the town manager supplied additional information on terms of the cost of leasing. And that cost of leasing is now 3.2 million is the estimate as opposed to 5 million. And so from my perspective, I think that maybe that needs to be thought about again in terms of the decision of what happens with 173 Bedford Street. Because if we're talking about $3 million in savings versus $1 million savings, I think that may change some people's minds, specifically when we're in a situation where we're trying to save money for the high school and other things. So from my perspective, I would like to have a further conversation about that issue. But I do agree with the overall idea of moving at the school administration out of Harrington, allowing those, that facility to be made into fields.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. Ms. Barry?
So I'm looking at the estimated project sequence slide, slide nine in what's in the packet. And it looks like central office. I guess I'm looking for, I don't know if Mr. Cronin or Mr. Malloy, if you can address this. We're looking for them to locate there from 2025 to 2029. Is that the idea? The red, the red bar?
Yes.
Okay. So then it says CO field construction, 2025 to 2026. Is the green bar the next line down? So that would be the fields to replace the old Harrington? So where is that in the annual town meeting warrant?
It's, I think, believe we have 6.2 million budgeted in the capital plan.
For fields?
For fields, yes.
And have we had a discussion about if they're going to be grass or synthetic and if they're going to be lit? And is that, what is it being paid for with? Is it CPC money?
It's CPC money, I believe.
If it's CPC money, it's not synthetic.
Hi. I believe the field request is in FY26 for Harrington for the replacement fields. I'd have to double check, but I believe that's what is in there is for FY26, not 25. So you wouldn't see it on this annual town meeting warrant. The request for the fields is going to go based off the design that was in the athletic feasibility study from 2020, 2021, or 21, 22. It shows the design with or without synthetic, with or without lights. It is part of the master plan and recommendations that would need to go into the full design and all of the community outreach to see what would best be the best fit for that location and meet the needs of the town and demand at that time.
And do we have information modeling it based on synthetic versus non-synthetic and usage and all of that?
It shows the number of hours gained or that you would have when it's natural grass or non. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Batteet. So just for the
Sorry, yes, Melissa Batteet, Director of Recreation. Thank you.
Okay. So you all know I'm the rec liaison, so I'm very concerned that CO is going to move and their recreation is never going to get their fields. This happened years ago, and I hate to see history repeat itself, so I'm just going to leave that on the table. The next question I have is regarding the part in the packet about in the motion about for uses recreation fields under the management of the Recreation Committee. Who actually owns the land? Does the municipal side own the land or the school department own the land?
The land where the former Harrington is located, the school department.
So this would remain school land?
I believe it would, yes.
So is this land going to be considered in the Article 97 swap?
Not to my knowledge. We haven't, we haven't had that discussion yet on the school building committee that that would be something that would be included. We're shooting to have all of the land swapped as part of the Article 97 or not, on the high school, all be part of that same parcel where the high school is.
Okay. So there is the possibility that we could invest in fields there, and then down the line, the school department could decide they need to put some type of structure there. Is that correct?
Well, they could, but it would take town meeting and everything to do.
I understand the process, but that's possible because the land would still remain with them.
Yes.
Okay. I see that as a potential issue. And those are my questions for now. Miss, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Ms. Hay?
Thank you. So I know that this board has expressed pretty uniformly that we do support housing at 173 at some stage or another. And potentially, I think the last conversation we had had it sort of at the end of the line. We talked about that potentially. But I also know, and I think it's on our agenda in a couple of weeks, to see the final report from LDA, which had talked about the potential for housing on that site as well. And if you look at that proposal, the way it lays out, I guess I'm curious, Mr. Cronin maybe is the best person to answer this, whether or not we could conceivably at some point be operating both the existing building at 173 in a, an office swing space capacity and begin with construction of what's sort of drawn as building three all the way in the back on that current possibility plan that LDA has drawn. Would the site support two different things, one of which is an active construction and one of which is an active office space?
Mr. Cronin?
My Cronin Director of Facilities. Is it not on? How's that any better? So I haven't seen that report yet, but I'm going to assume that the school department is going to need a healthy amount of parking, given the parking needs that they have now, which will go all the way back to the back of the edge of the paved property line. I know there's a dirt area behind that. I'm not quite sure how far down that goes, and I don't know the footprint of building three. And then what gives me a little pause is all that construction traffic that will have to happen to the side of the building as they're operating in the building. Sure, we can build buildings next to buildings. That's something we do on a regular basis, look at Hastings. But I need to understand what building three looks like to really opine on that.
So I guess I would just like to ask if that's something as we move forward with the potential for plans on renovating this building, if there's a way to look at it for, you know, the possibility of a work drive, a segregated construction drive as well as parking and the possibility, rather than having to wait 10 years. That would be my personal opinion on that. And then the only other question that I had had, Mr. Malloy, I know you had talked about having looked through the available leasing information that we have access to and gathering information about the costs of leasing on the commercial market. And that was embedded into these numbers. We did receive some correspondence from a town meeting member who I believe is, yes, in the room. You know, talking about the possibility that actually going out with an RFI might make a different equation. Can you just talk to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, we typically wouldn't issue an RFP for leasing space unless we're actually actively seeking to lease space. Similar to, we wouldn't put out an RFP right now to build the East Lexington Fire Station because we're not really looking to do that right now. And then you have people who put efforts into things, and then if we're not serious about leasing, then we do at some point, if we ever do get serious and want to lease, it's going to be more difficult to work with someone like that. I've never heard of anybody putting out a lease just to fish for information. We use CoStar, which is a subscription reality service that we use in both the Economic Development Department and the Assessors Office to determine when leases are up, what lease rates are, and what leases are currently available. So we had the staff go through and find from the space needs analysis all of the spaces that are, that were currently available on the day that they looked in the size that we would need or would subdivide down to the size that we would need, and then what the prices were per square foot for those spaces. And so these are places that were currently on the market that are available through the CoStar system. It's not just, you know, looking on Craigslist to see what's available. And so when And so when I got that information, I looked at what the highs and lows were. I've got it open here. The lowest overall rate was 2260 per square foot and the highest overall rate was $50.02 per square foot. The average of all of the lows, there were 11 parcels or properties that were available on that particular day was $28.73 per square foot. And the average of all of the high ends of the leases was $35.11 per square foot. And so we're looking at roughly 20,000 square feet. And so that's using the average of the low and the average, low and high, and averaging that for midpoint. And using that as the lease rate comes up to about 3.2 million dollars per year for the years the school department would be in. Excuse me, for the years the school department would be in there. But if it were spring, swing space that was also going to be used for the library, well, that we did the HVAC work. And then also for the town office building, when we do work on this building, then you're talking more in the neighborhood, a total cost of about 5.6, 5.7 million dollars for swing space for all of that, that if we weren't using it, that building for swings, swing space for those three uses, we would need to lease space for that entire time period. It's not just leasing space for when the school administration would be looking for something. It would be leasing space for when the library was doing the HVAC project and when we do some project update and renovate this building. And that's really why we were looking at it for as a long and presenting as a long-term solution. And at that point, at the end of it, it would be available for affordable housing or other projects. I know just from the way the building is situated on the property, it would be hard to have a segregated construction drive because the driveways aren't that wide. And the building is situated right in the middle of the lot. And so it's got one in on one side and an out on the other side. So it would be difficult to do that, maybe not impossible. We might have to remove trees or something on one side in order to widen the driveway. But I think it would be tough to do that. But we did, we did look at the lease option and it turned out to be one of the more expensive options. In the memo that I presented to the board, the least expensive option was leaving the central administration office where it was. But what that does, it prevents us from having the additional fields. And if you were to build fields somewhere else, even at the 6.2 million dollar cost, not having to pay to acquire additional real estate, you're still then getting up to the same cost as what our recommendation was. And, and so really overall, it made most the most sense to use a building already owned for swing space for three different uses and then have it available for affordable housing and get the additional fields for the recreation department.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Ms. Hay, did you have a follow-up?
I did, but I'll let somebody else jump on it.
Mr. Lucente?
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Yeah, I think we've all acknowledged this is a complex puzzle and there's a lot of moving parts. But one of the things I've sort of tried to put in perspective is the things we've agreed on so far. Because I think there's some areas of disagreement and frankly, I'm, I'm on the fence with the lease versus renovate option. And I'll explain why in a minute. But I think we've all agreed that staying at central administration, central administration, staying at Old Harrington is not a good idea. I think everyone has pretty much agreed to that one. So I think that one should just come off the list. I don't think, I just don't think it's a great idea. And that cuts down some of our complications and decision-making. And if, okay, that means the fields will go there, that's another decision I think we've all agreed to. What's confusing to me is when you look at the timeline of the space for 173. You say, okay, if we get down the path of spending $6 million to renovate for central administration to move into 173, my understanding is that 6 million would be things such as HVAC, removing a lot of old infrastructure in the building, I think that's preventing use of some of the top floor. It would also be an elevator and sprinkler system, okay? Which are all things that any building renovation would need. What I'm, what I'm confused most about is after the 6 million, what are the additional costs that would be required or needed for a library or for the town office building to move in? Knowing that we're talking about a long timeframe, I think where I get uncomfortable is saying, we're going to spend 6 million now. And then in a few years, we're going to spend 6 million again. And then in a few years, we're going to send 6 million again. That makes it a game changer for me where it's like, this is a waste. But if you tell me that the 6 million that we're spending now has actually got a long runway to it. And we can use it for all these purposes, then it actually makes more sense. So that's, that's where I'm teetering on that piece of information. And I know Mr. Cronin doesn't have a crystal ball. But you know probably best what the space requirements and needs are for these three different uses. And in the past, I do remember you saying that at least two of them are office space, which office space is office space. It's not so much you can do to make that fancier or less fancy to some degree. So I guess, Mr. Cronin, if I could put you on the spot, if you could just give some insight into that long-range plan and the expenses beyond the 6 million, that would help me.
So I think the core expenditure that you see this year, as we talked about HVAC, sprinklers and elevator are crucial to be able to run that building. We've got a waiver to have the police and fire departments in that building. We cannot do anything in that building until those are done. So let's assume those core things were in place and they'll last the duration of the life of the building and however the town wants to use it. There's some modest renovation that will need to be done in the building in order to move in the next tenant. We don't want to keep the jail cells in there. We probably want to modify those a little bit. Locker rooms may not be necessary for the next tenant, so we'll do some minor modest modifications. I see the town office building and the, and the CO being very similar uses, similar. Take all the furniture that's in this room, bring it over to the conference room in there, we're going to plop it down and then we're going to reuse it. And, and you know, when that comes back, it'll come back. Same as CO, I can see us taking all of the furniture that's over there, picking it up, bring it over to 173, plopping it into those little office spaces. Might there be some minor tweaks? There were some minor tweaks when we went from, from fire to police. I can see the same kind of thing. The, the one-off for me is the library. I've not, I've not talked to Corin about how Corin Stenbridge, the library director, I haven't talked to Corin about how we would really modify that building in order to incorporate all the collections or some of the parts of the collections and the little office spaces. I could see that building kind of fitting, that, that upper deck, that, that top floor is wide open. And I can see us having a library browsing series of collections that are available for patrons to come in and, and see them. We have a bunch of smaller office spaces that fit some of the office staff that they have there now. I could see that being a pretty nice fit. Not a lot of modifications necessary to do those three uses.
Just to follow up, when you say tweaks, and we did tweak the building from fire to police, but the tweak came at a, how much was? 500,000?
Give a, give a take. I can remember the number off the top of my head, but it's in that.
Do you think these tweaks would be? I, I mean, I can see from the CO to the town office building, a zero tweak scenario, right? You probably leave the furniture there too and just say, hey, you guys are moving, pack your stuff. But that's not, that's not for a long period, you know? So this is where tweaking for the library is, to me, a critical decision point for, for this. Because if it turns out that the library won't fit in there without significant renovation, you know, again, I'm less inclined to spend the money now to move the central administration there. I'd rather lease space.
And Mr. Cronin, before you answer that, when, when you think about what it might take to change 173 Bedford Street for those uses, compare that to the comparable tenant modifications in a leased space. Because those would also need to be adjusted, I would presume.
So it's two different pieces. I, I would be happy to bring Corin Stenbridge over to the building and walk her through it and kind of put her eyeballs on and see how she would relate her operations into that building, especially on that second floor. So I'd like to do that. That's a piece I think that would help me understand how she sees library operations. The second piece is in my conversations with folks before and after meetings, I, I understand there's two ways to do leases with adjustments to space. One is they want to kick it in because they want your business and they want you to come in and do that. And that's, this is an unfamiliar world to me. So, so they want to invite you by eating that upfront cost to do some of those modifications or tweaks. And some of them take that and they put it into the, incorporate it into the lease and they spread it out over the duration of the time that you're there. So my understanding is that they're willing to do those, the landlords, if you will, they're willing to do that kind of work for us and be part of the solution. It may not be that we have to have this big, large upfront cost in order to modify. That's a, I need to get more into that. I don't know that world at all.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Mr. Sandin? Sorry? No, no, go ahead.
So I appreciate Doug's questions. And the, and I appreciate your answers, Mr. Cronin. And to me, it would be perfect if we were swapping the town office building schedule and the library, because then you would be having office space, going to office space. My concern is what happens when we modify office space to library space and then we need to modify library space back to office space on the other side? And as we all know, as we've all learned over the past four or five years, whatever our estimates are today, they always seem to be higher and what the actual costs always seem to be higher. So when we are assuming, when we're having these conversations right now, I think we need to be thinking about that. The other thing that I think about is a timing kind of thing. Because if we were to able to lease right now, there's two kinds of advantages I see on a timing basis. Well, three, three advantages on a timing basis. Instead of spending $6 million today, we would be spending 3.2 over five years. And that's a big difference in terms of the outflow of the money that we have as a town. But the other side of things is if we leased and then we kept the library in the town office building on the same schedule, that renovation could be feature renovation for, designed specifically for the library. But it wouldn't need to happen until the library project was ready to go. The other advantage you could see of leasing is you could maybe even move the library project in a bit. So there's that possibility to it, give some flexibility for the library in terms of being able to address their key issues earlier. So those are a number of different advantages I see, but they, and, and I'm sorry, Ms. Hay, I also completely agree with you about the need. When, when we look at all the properties in town that, that the town owns that are applicable for use for affordable housing, this is the ideal location for affordable housing in the town. And if we're really serious about our need to do affordable housing, and if we really believe that this is an urgent crisis that we need to be addressing, putting it off for 10 years is, is an issue for me, and I would like to figure out how we can accelerate that.
So Ms. Hay, and then I have some comments.
So my last thing was just that I think, and, and I have not been dissuaded by listening to my colleagues, that would, at, at least what I would like to see next, and you all can see if you agree with me, is an actual analysis that maybe follows a three-way conversation along the lines, Mr. Cronin, of what you said of taking Ms. Stenbridge over and then sort of trying to map out what really are the, the uses and the needs from office to conference to open space, bathroom facilities, everything else that happens if we were to pick up and move central office, the town office and the library, just sort of on top, each, each one into that same space. How much overlap could there be? What are the things that could be multipurpose? To get to Mr. Lucente's point about not having to keep redoing. And so in my head, there's sort of a, an order of operations that makes sense, which is I would like us to commit to moving central office, because I think we can all agree that is the efficient and right thing to do. I'd like to see us commit to putting fields there. And then I would like to see us commit to doing that kind of space analysis to figure out what we really need. And respectfully, I think that if we were to actually go out to the market, it isn't an idle request. Because frankly, if the market can give us a better deal or something that includes a, a better timing or monetary option that would then free up 173 for housing, I would be interested in that. So that, that's how I would like to see us move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. So, so I'm glad you framed it that way, in part because I think there are multiple questions we have. And we have agreement, broad agreement, and we want to memorialize that. For me, I mean, I was presuming, and we had this discussion at the, at the summit meeting, that the move to 173 Bedford Street for the central office was the presumption unless we found a better deal going forward. So the question of, will we continue doing the analysis as time progressed? For me, was, that was part of what we were going to do. Because until, but we needed to proceed with the planning to be able to move out of Old Harrington. So, and, and the current target is 173, or the, the proposal is the current target is 173 Bedford Street. And we would be looking for other alternatives to see if there was something that was more effective. With respect to the long-term use of the property, I agree that it is an ideal location for housing. But I'm not convinced that it's something I want to rush on for a variety of reasons. One is our capacity for growth in housing from a town-directed activity. We have a couple of different projects we're looking at in different town-owned land items. One in particular that is being looked at seriously. And I think that you, we don't necessarily have the capacity to do too many in parallel. Secondly, I'm not entirely sure what the effects on housing in general, both in the private sector and housing that is generated by the town, is going to have over the next few years. We've just changed zonings fairly significantly to allow for denser housing through the MBTA Act. And the zoning that we implemented for it. And I'd like to see that starts emerging before we move with too many or with, with, before we move with multiple projects forward. And all of this is colored by the concerns I've had when we purchased 173 Bedford Street. We had specific needs for public safety. And it was expected to be fire and then police, et cetera. But we also were at that time really concerned with rapid growth in our need for educational space. And that location was another space we identified as being a reasonable location to place either in conjunction with adjacent properties or that space alone, depending on the kind of educational need. And I'm not really enthusiastic about closing that option in the next few years. Within the decade, I think we'll have a much better sense of how things are emerging in town. And that it may well be a point where we say, no, we're willing to close the usefulness of this land as town land for these other purposes. And I absolutely think that housing would be a great use or a multi-use in that location. But it's not something that I would want to have derail plans now for swing space because we wanted to put housing there in the short term. So, so my perspective is, yes, let's, let's agree on the simple things. Let's have that analysis keep going as we move forward. And we did get recommendations from the Economic Development Advisory Committee on what they would like to see as part of the analysis. And for that analysis to be undertaken at the right times as we move forward. But that we put ourselves on a path so that we're not blocking the need for recreation fields that are going to be put in place in about two, two and a half years. Need for recreation fields that are going to be put in place in about two, two and a half years. So Ms. Ms. Barry.
Mr. Pato, is the intent to vote the motion that's in the packet?
The intent is for us to find a motion that we can vote on.
Okay, so the motion that's in the packet, I'm just going to go out there and say I am a no for. I was a no for the design money for 173 Bedford. I am a no for moving central office into 173 Bedford. I am a yes for finding appropriate space for central office. I really think we need to do some work and see about potentially leasing some space for them. I would like us to encourage then the school committee to tear down the central administration building and for it to become fields that would be under municipal control. The recreation department's control. I also feel that we have talked this talk forever about housing. We own this property. It is an incredible space for us to actually build affordable housing within our community. And it's about time we actually did something. So I am a no as this motion stands.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Mr. Sandin.
So I would agree with Ms. Barry's comments and following up on Ms. Hayes' comments in terms of asking for more. Planning, perhaps we could add on to what Ms. Hay was suggesting. That we're also planning, asking for a plan of how to expedite affordable housing at this site. You know, whatever, whatever, whatever. So we'd like to have. You know, the appropriate stakeholders look at this site and come back with, you know, some recommendations of what would actually move it forward in a in a way that would be acceptable to the town.
I was just making sure everybody is able to.
Mr. Pato, thank.
Mr. Malloy. So we had this discussion in November and it's the board's. Sounds to me like going in a different direction than would seem to be the consensus at that meeting. It it does seem to me anyway. So we have. Built the town meeting warrant around construction projects that. Involve debt issuance, debt issuance. As opposed to lease payments. Lease payments would come out of something other than a debt issuance. It would either have to come out of operating budgets or it would need to come out of reserves. And so that's a different town meeting vote. For this town meeting, so a decision does need to be made fairly rapidly. On what direction we're going in so that we could have the appropriate town meeting vote. At this annual town meeting because we can't. We would have to move the my understanding is and Mr. Cronin's here, he can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would need to move the. Central admin office out this year and do demolition. July in July of 25. Okay. So if.
I'm sorry. So Mr. Cronin wasn't on the microphone, but I thought he said they'd move in July of 25. But if they get the authorization July 1 of 25, how can they move in without the sprinklers in the elevator?
So the request that's before the board before town meeting would be to to do the renovate renovation of the space at 173 this summer. Starting in July of 2024, when the police department moves into their new building. So we'll have that window of time to do the renovation work, the HVAC, the sprinklers, et cetera. For this window and then July of 25, the central office, if this plan was followed, would move into that renovated 173 building, allowing us to demo that building. In about six weeks or so, and then allow the recreation department to begin the process of building fields at that point.
Ms. Hay.
So it seems to me that we can walk and chew gum. And that would be, and I apologize if that was a little harsher than I meant it to be. But that we can put this out as. An option that we are going to look for lease space. If we find lease space, we don't need to expend. Lease money until July of 25. If we can't, then we and we decide fiscally that the right move is in fact the demo, then we have the authorization. To expend funds which if we don't need them, we don't spend them. Am I missing something there?
Right, Ms. Malloy, it does seem like that's the sequence. And what I would recommend is to have that authorization in place. So that we can proceed, but then do the actual work based on, you know, the further analysis. All right. So I'm going to try to break this down into a few motions so that because I don't expect we'll have unanimous votes. I will take some public comment first. Right, what I wanted to do was I wanted to structure it so we had an understanding, but they'll take public comment. So I'm going to recognize individuals in the room and online. If you're online, please raise your hand using the zoom function or a star nine if you're dialed in and we'll start in the room. Please introduce yourself by name and any relevant board or committee. And you'll have two minutes.
John McKenna, 9 Hancock Street and Precinct 6, Town Meeting Member. So I just wanted to give you some information. Number one, Cary Library previously operated out of Cary Hall. So I think wherever they go, they'll make do and they'll do a great job as they did then. Number two, I wanted the board to be aware that we have gone out for RFIs. For leasing and other options in the past when we were looking. And the board was looking at what to do about 201 Bedford Street before we did the construction. We actually put out an RFI to commercial developers as to what they would do with the site. If we went a commercial route and that information was invaluable in helping us make a decision as to what the best thing to do. So I urge you to send out an RFI and my real estate background will tell you. That given the market now, when people don't want brick and mortar buildings, there are a glut of buildings out there. And there may be buildings that we're not even aware of that are going to be available. So I wanted to let you know about that. And then it sounds like you're not going to use the existing motion, but just in case anything comes similar to that. I would highly recommend that you take out the words when moved to Lexington High School. I think you need to give yourself flexibilities and just leave it at when they move out. And then. The if the if we go with a lease, the timing actually might be much better because the building will be already when you need it. So you could put out the RFI for 20 July 1, 2025. For however many years you think. And then my last point is. I am going to slightly disagree with Ms. Barry about who should control the property at Harrington School. I'm not clear that the educational athletics was consulted as developing that plan. And we know that with the high school track, that was a major issue. And so we want to make sure.
Two minutes are up.
Okay, if I can finish my sentence, sure. So I I want to make sure that the school is able to retain the options they need because they don't have any other space for expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing in the room.
Nanette Burns, 6 Sherburne Road, and I am a member of the Housing Partnership Board. And I appreciate very much the comments in support of affordable housing from the board tonight. And we just wanted to say. On behalf of the board that we would very much like to be part of the discussions of the feasibility study that's underway for the long term potential for housing. I understand within a few weeks, the final report may be ready. And so we just wanted to officially request to be a part of that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker in the room.
Bob Pressman, speaking as a resident. The fields are an integral part of the high school project. This community preservation fund is not a high school construction fund. Those fields should be funded as part of the high school project. Beyond that, there's not going to be, if you're a person familiar with the status of the money in the. CPA after this year and next year will know there's not 600 million, there's not $6 million available for fields in one year. And then I'd like to know where the board stands on the stone building project. Because like if 6 million came out for fields one year. And actually, what we received this year is that the same year. There would be an ask for 5 million for the stone project. So I mean, this won't all fit together, but I. Start with my main point that it's part of the high school project and it should be funded as part of the high school project. And we should be able to continue giving more. Money for housing to make to overcome the inequity in the past.
And thank you. And Mr. Pressman, could you just repeat your address for the record?
22 Locust Ave.
Thank you. The next speaker in the room.
Bridger McGaw, Precinct 6, 89 Merriam Street, Chair of the Town Meeting Members Association and Vice Chair of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Really appreciate the dialogue tonight. I think what we've been trying to express is is a lot of this sequencing. And so there's a cash flow opportunity here to sort of minimize expenditures across all of these different uses. But essential to that was the point made by Ms. Hay and echoed by other members about. What are the crosswalk of needs across the three projects that we've been talking about and making sure that all those are documented? The second part is the RFI, the broker community is going to help you do this for free. They're going to give you more intelligence that you have that all of us in town meeting are going to ask about when we when when this article comes before us. So knowing that there is no opportunity or knowing that in a year, there's lots of opportunity. Would be better answered by not us, but by the landowners and who actually have facilities that would meet the town's needs. And if there are no properties that meet the town's. Program objectives, you'll know that too and can can feel confident that you're making a good investment of taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker in the room, please.
Hi, I'm Elaine Tong, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. I appreciate the difficulty of your decision. There's a lot of factors that need to go into it. And I also appreciate the comments. It's a question of priority and what are you guys going to prioritize? I appreciate that there's discussion that perhaps we have a project that might be coming up. That's going to take a lot of town resources and efforts. However. Looking at the parcels that are available in town. In the center of town, which is the ideal location for affordable housing. The feasibility study identifies these three parcels. And the parcel at 173 Bedford Street by far is the best parcel for a development. So whether or not you decide to postpone and put it off for 10 years. In which event it'll take another five to six or seven, depending on the economic climate at that point. To actually have a building in place on that property, you're talking 15 to 17 years. And so that's a decision you're going to have to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the room and seeing nobody online, I'll come back to the board for any further discussion. Mr. Lucente.
Just one comment. As we're looking at. The exploring the idea of a lease option. I think one of the important points is not only the space, but is there a location preference that would. You know, not be acceptable that, you know, might help us. And I don't know if that discussion has happened with the superintendent. You know, but the superintendent may say, oh, you know, we don't want to be at the end of Hartwell Ave next to. The base, you know, it's just not central enough or something. You know, I think that's an important thing to understand what are the. Wishes of the central administration. So that we don't, if we go down the path of RFI, that we're not. Getting requests that we would never actually. Take up in reality, so I think. I just wanted to put that out there that we're not just assuming any office space in the border of town that may not may not be acceptable.
Yes, Dr. Hackett is on the line. I'm just trying to make her available because she would like to speak. Ms. Katzenbach, could you make Dr. Hackett a co host so she can turn on our video when she speaks? Thank you. And Dr. Hackett, you should be able to. Address the board at this point.
Hi, Mr. Pato, thank you. Hello, select board, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Let me see if I can turn the video on. Okay, here we go. So I I want to start by thanking you for your attention to affordable housing. It is a super important issue and I understand also the decision that you're facing. And I wanted to raise a few points that I think may not have been raised. Yet, so I'll start with the most pertinent and then I'll work my way backwards into a few less important points, but still worth repeating. First of all, we're in the educational plan development portion of the project. And through the development of the ed plan, what happens is we are working out the details of what the new school will look like. We have one year to do it. That year that we have to identify whether it's a new build, a renovation or an ad reno. Is about halfway over. So that started in June, we need to finish by June. So we basically have six months to figure out the planning. The reason that's relevant is because some of the operations that are at central office. Could potentially be integrated into the new high school. And without going into all of the details around it, because there are many, we started this process in September of 2022. Already it's 2024, so in a blink, we've almost gone through close to two years, a year and a half at least. And during that time, we looked at all of the space needs. We conducted a space utilization study. We looked at 40,000 square feet or so at central office. We winnowed that list down to 17,000 square feet. To find out a way that we could fit into 173 Bedford potentially or another space. And then through that planning process, we identified. Operations that could typically go into a project. So for example, the print shop is an operation that is at central office. It takes up a fair amount of square footage. I don't have the tab open in front of me, but it's it's something like 4,000 square feet, I want to say. That operation, if that were to be integrated into the high school project, could be eligible for reimbursement. That's just one example. Another example could be the tech department, which is housed in different locations, some at the high school, some at central office. It makes a whole lot more sense for the entire tech operation to be integrated into the high school. So there's a financial opportunity because those spaces could be funded and could be offset with additional support by the MSBA. Now, the problem with what I'm describing is that if we don't have an opportunity to properly plan. We're not going to be able to put that before the MSBA for genuine consideration. Which means that what we're discussing. Is more or less off the table if we don't have a plan sooner rather than later. So I was jotting down notes to myself and. Joe, I think you said something about the presumption was unless we had a better deal, we'd be able to proceed. That was my understanding. As well, though I know the complications with all of this. And what I jotted down in my notes is that that whole domino effect that we're running up against. And really, if you don't vote in favor of a move to 173. It could be in essence a vote against the plan altogether because time is short. Whether we are able to integrate the way that we want to in the feasibility study is all a matter of what we're going to be able to do with our space. And I could give more concrete examples and spend more time on it at a later time if you are interested. The other thing that I wanted to underscore, it was the first thing that I wrote in my notes is that for us, this is about. Less disruption to children and the athletics are significantly impacted if we don't do something about the field. So when we take that building offline, if we don't have an alternative setting like central office where athletic fields would be. The rec department will have challenges themselves, but so will our our kids. And our kids have had significant disruption through the pandemic. So to see them go through more disruption and not be able to play sports. that's, that's the real impact from a student perspective, which I know you all care about as much as people on the school side. There was a mention of comparable tenant modification. Joe brought that up and asked Mr. Cronin to comment on it. And just one example that might be useful, I sit on the lab board of directors and we're looking at leasing space and getting out of the building, which is currently at the Burlington High School site. And so there are good deals right now on leasing spaces, which I think Mr. Malloy identified using the system that he mentioned, CoStar, I think it was. And there aren't tons, but there are some, some good potential options. And one of the things that we discussed at the last lab board meeting was that there are tenant modifications that happen just as a necessity in any kind of move. So I think this goes back to Mr. Lucente's question, which I think is a good one. Is it going to be six million plus six million plus six million? My sense is probably not, given the type of renovations we're looking at. You listed them out, Doug. It was the HVAC, the sprinkler system, the elevator and some infrastructure. All those will need to be in place if we were to use the space again anyway. So when it comes to the question of the libraries, obviously I can't speak to the plan for use, but just wanted to underscore the fact that those infrastructure pieces would certainly shave down that cost of a six million dollar renovation, I would think. And then just wanted to also underscore the fact that Central Office would be out this year and we would need to do the renovation. So I am feeling a, a bit unsettled by saying that we're going to go look and possibly have the promise of a lease. I don't know that that's realistic. I want to be optimistic because I would love to be able to see everybody get everything that they want in the process. But I, I feel like I need to be practical and realistic and tell you that if we don't have an answer sooner rather than later, I'm not going to, not just me, our school building committee will not be able to integrate into the, into the educational plan what may offset costs for taxpayers down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. So I've sketched out several motions. Ms. Hay, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I am not entirely clear. Dr. Hackett, you, you indicated that you can't put into the education plan the inclusion of things like the print shop or an integrated tech department, unless you know where the swing space location is? I'm, I'm not sure I'm following that. I understand why you need to know the, the final place, but I'm not sure why I understand why the swing space is involved in that decision or in that education planning.
Well, may I, Mr. Pato?
Please do.
Thank you. So for our planning purposes, what we're trying to do is to say, here is where we expect to be. I'm thinking about your question, Ms. Hay, and thinking about would we be able to do this if we were at a leased space? But I think the question, I suppose we could say that we would put the whole operation into the high school. That, that was one approach that we talked about. Part of what we would like to do through the feasibility study is at least say, I mean, let's say it didn't work out that they would approve the Central Office in the building. They would approve probably things like technology, things like the print shop, some operational issues. We do have to get special permission on the Central Office piece. And I just think it's going to be harder if, if we, if we don't know where we're going because we, I mean, we basically put all our eggs in one basket and we would be asking for the whole operation, everything that's currently at Central Office less, you know, the, well, seventeen thousand square feet of it at least, rather than taking some of those operations, like we may have the potential to not do everything if they were to say no to the Central Office operation and they were to say, you've got to find some other place to go. In, in that case, we would be able to say, we can take some of that square footage, around nine thousand of it in fact, and integrate that into the plan without much trouble because we have some precedent for that. There are operations that are currently in existence at the high school, that, that kind of thing. But it, it's, it would be helpful to spend some time and sort of show and map it out and not in a meeting like this. So maybe if we have an opportunity to do one of our smaller meetings.
So Dr. Hackett, I think that can be part of a follow-up analysis to flesh out.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Hay, were you finished with your question or?
Yeah, I just, I guess I just want to understand that either way, we're expecting that the Central Office is out of one seventy-three by the time that we're planning to put the library in. So that, that's why I guess I got confused, confused about the concept of whether it's in the ed plan or not. Because either way, you don't have the, at least as what we did come to consensus at the summit was that one seventy-three would not be a permanent home for Central Office. So either way, there needs to be, unless that's changed, and I missed that, that, that either way, Central Office needs to know a landing spot, whether it's the high school or whether it's somewhere else after construction of the high school is complete.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Mr. Lucente, Mr. Sandin?
So I, just following up on Ms. Hayes' comment, I, I too am of the impression that we had all reached consensus that the final home for Central Office was in the high school. And that was an uncontested point. So if, if I'm missing something, let me know, but that was my understanding.
So, so Mr. Sandin, that is the desire that we agreed to. However, whether or not we could put it in there remains part of the, the process with the MSBA. Right? There's, and as Dr. Hackett has explained, there's certainly segments that should be uncontroversial to be included, but the administrative portion of the Central Office might be troublesome. And we may find ourselves with having to figure out how to do this, even if it's an adjacent project to the high school project, as opposed to the, what the MSBA is, is supporting. But yes, the consensus was we weren't redesigning one seventy-three Bedford Street as the permanent home for the Central Office operations. So I think, I don't see hands struggling near mics. I'm gonna, I, I've broken out three motions. The first two address what I think are the simple consensus points, and it's to move to support the relocation of the Central Office out of Old Harrington. The second one is to support the demolition of the Central Administration Office Building for use as recreation fields under the management of the Recreation Committee. If the board is satisfied, we can, we can still those two. The third one is more about, well, the third one is to support the continued analysis of the trade-offs of moving the Central Office to one seventy-three Bedford Street or to another leased location with the decision taken in time for occupancy in the summer of two thousand and twenty-five. So to put a hard boundary here that we as a board recognize that this is not something we can dither on. All right?
Could you repeat that last motion? I just want to make sure you understood all of it.
Yeah, so I wanted to vote on the first two first and because, because I thought you might want to do some wordsmithing of the last one. All right. And I'm not going to take more public.
I just have a question about you, the motion that you just said to make sure you guys are doing what you want to and can be doing, if that's okay. It's quick.
Please.
Very quick. So I'm Don McKenna, Precinct Six. Just want to make sure you, the second motion you said was to put the, to, to take, do the fields under the control of Recreation Committee. It's under the control of the school committee right now. So wouldn't the school committee have to give up control to do that? So that's what I just wanted to clarify. You figure out if I'm wrong.
The land is under the control of, the school committee is owned by the town as a whole. And Mr. Malloy?
That's not true.
I, I believe it would take a town meeting vote and we would also need to subdivide the land because it was all acquired as one acquisition in nineteen fifty-one or fifty-nine. And it's one large parcel and then the recreation parcel is next to it, the one where the fields are right now. And so where the school is, has the school, single parcel has both the new Harrington School and the old Harrington School on one parcel. So in order to transfer the management or whatever of where old Harrington is, you would need to go through a subdivision of the land and then there would have to be a town meeting vote. And I discussed that with town council. There would need to be a town meeting vote to transfer to the general municipal use.
All right, thank you. So let me reread. The second one would be to move to, to, just for use as recreation fields, full stop. I'll, I'll read the motions. Can we vote on the first two and then we'll continue? All right. So I moved to support the relocation of the Central Office out of Old Harrington and further move to support the demolition of the Central Administration Office Building for use as recreation fields. There are second.
I thought the fields were in the second one, not the first one.
I, I can, right. Do you want to vote on, let's vote on them separately. So move to support the relocation of the Central Office out of Old Harrington. Is there a second?
Second.
The move is in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Second motion is to move to support the demolition of the Central Administration Office Building for use as recreation fields. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Is four to one. So now to the last.
Can I just ask a clarifying? I'm not sure I understand Ms. Berry's nay. Could you just explain, just because maybe I misunderstood something?
So I would love the fields to be there, but I would love the fields to be under the town municipalities' control, not the school department's control. So if you want to split that motion again, we can try it again. I think we're tying the hands of future boards, potentially.
And, and I think we stand four to one. The, the, the last item is to, the move to one seventy-three Bedford Street. So this is, as worded, is to support the continued analysis of trade-offs of moving Central Office to one seventy-three Bedford Street or to another leased location with the decision taken in time for occupancy in the summer of two thousand and twenty-five. Move to support the continued analysis of the trade-offs of moving Central Office to one seventy-three Bedford Street or to another leased location with a decision taken in time for occupancy in the December of two thousand and twenty-five.
Can we just add something in there about the analysis, including the, the other expected potential uses? And I, I don't have it right in my head right now, but I think what we wanted was an analysis of the overlay of the three projected swing space uses mapped against one seventy-three and mapped against the retail or the, the leasing market. Does that?
Is that?
Is that shared?
Yes, and affordable housing, right.
I, I didn't understand the affordable housing part.
So at this point, I don't want to introduce affordable housing into this motion because I'm, I'm worried about how we're planning for the municipal needs over the next few years. And affordable housing is a, an activity we're looking at in a variety of locations. But I, I don't support holding up the, the movement of municipal swing space to this location on the basis of, of support of affordable housing. If the rest of the board wants to add that, that's fine, but I'm not in support of it.
So just to be clear, I wasn't advocating for holding up anything. All I was advocating for was that when we are doing the analysis of the potential needs for the uses of this space, that one of the potential uses is affordable housing.
Ms. Hay?
So Mr. Sandin, I think, I think actually it is two different things. And we have an analysis right now that shows affordable housing use of that space. We, we know what that one is. And I think what we're looking for now is an analysis of the, the swing space uses and the viability of that space versus commercial space. And then we can cross compare. When we look at our options and we make our decision about where we want the swing space to go, whether it's one seventy-three or whether it's the commercial field, we would at that time be able to integrate the, the report that we will have in final form, I think, next week from LDA. So I, I think that, in my mind anyway, I think we're getting that housing analysis. I think what we are missing is the evaluation of, of options for, for swing space.
So there still is that question which you raised, which is, is it possible to do some housing in the back of the property while these other things are going?
Right. And I think that, I'm sorry, Mr. Pato. But I think that's sort of, again, that's second order, right? So the first order is, this is a housing analysis, this is a space needs analysis. And then as we evaluate the two against each other, if we're leaning towards one seventy-three as the space needs swing space, we can then figure out whether there's a possibility of incorporation. But I, I hear what you're saying. It sort of all has to happen somewhat simultaneously. We already have the first level of the housing one ongoing. We're looking for the second level, sort of to fall in behind the space needs analysis. In my head, that's how they all fit together, but that could be just me.
Mr. Lucente?
I just want to concur with Ms. Hay, I believe, that, you know, we, we just need to make this decision. We've just decided at this table, may not be what everyone else wants in the other committees, but we've just decided to make the, you know, school administration homeless. And we now need to pick a home for them, whether it's leased space or one seventy-three. So I think that's our priority. The other thing I'd like to see in the motion is sort of an understanding of when that decision needs to be made. Because if we say for occupancy in July of twenty-five, that's, that's, I think we need to make a decision in the next couple of months.
That is my expectation as well. I believe we will be, there are going to be multiple steps on that decision along the way. There is an article for, for refit money for one seventy-three Bedford Street, which would be part of that. It's not the full decision. Mr. Malloy, do you at this time have an, or Mr. Cronin have a, a drop dead date?
Well, it would be probably the July of twenty-five for you to demolish the Central Office Building and begin building recreation fields in time for them to be ready to be used for when the high school project starts. The, the other thing, just as a comment, I, I, we can get lease rates through an RFP process right now. I'm not sure that we will be able, even if we have a space needs analysis done for the library. And we don't necessarily do those in-house. They're done by an architectural firm. So we'd have to engage an architect to do a space needs analysis for the library and then one for the town office building. But to get lease rates for out years, to get lease rates for out years would be a little bit more difficult to ask a, a property owner to give us a lease rate for two thousand and twenty-seven through twenty-nine and then twenty-nine through thirty-one or something. It's going to be, I, I don't know that we'll get any responses to that kind of a lease RFP. We could get one probably pretty easily for the Central Office Building because we already have a space needs analysis for that. We know what kind of space, how many rooms we need, conferences and all of that. And so we can do that. But the other one would be a little bit more difficult. It's not something I think we can do right now.
Ms. Hay?
I was just going to say, I, I would hope that there's an ability to maybe not be entirely precise, but to say a ten-year lease and an expectation of, you know, the rough estimates of what the other two users are. I think we've already. two users are. I think we've already drilled down, it sounds like, from Dr. Hackett and Mr. Cronin relatively well on what the schools need. And if we can have some work. And I don't know, do we still, we used to have a contract for some sort of architectural design work on contract. Do we still have any money in that account? It used to be LDA who did that for us. Is that still an option? Okay, so the, I mean, I would hope that maybe that's something that we could get done using that to give us a rough idea enough to go out for an RFP. And again, you know, we're talking about a 10-year lease as opposed to three separate leases, I think.
Yes. One of the things that troubles me is that I remember being on the executive committee of the, of the library a couple of years ago, when we were talking about CHIRP, the Children's Project, and whether or not to combine them. And the, the notion that the library would not necessarily continue operating in its current form with the degree of public engagement in the building was what was being floated on at that time. So the needs may well be very much office space and space for pickup of books a lot like it was done during the pandemic. And that's a very different and very similar needs analysis as is for central office and for the town office building, as opposed to trying to do something like was done in Carroll Memorial Building during the major renovation of the building almost 20 years ago now. Mr. Sandin?
So in terms of the analysis, I wasn't hoping to get a 10-year out lease numbers either. I was more thinking about answering Mr. LaCente's question, is this going to cost six, six and six? What are our needs for renovating the building for the library purposes? And so that's what I was hoping that this analysis would answer, not what the lease prices are for, you know, seven or eight years from now.
Right. But the question, the, Mr. Malloy, you answered the question of when we will need to be able to move, which was already here. But the question, I think the, the more important question is when do we have to make a decision? Because, you know, occupancy of 2025 means the decision is made in May of 24?
I, I, I would think that at the very latest, if we were leasing space, we would probably need to have a vote of town meeting authorizing a leased space and appropriating the funds to do so by the fall town meeting this year. I don't think you could go beyond that. I think that would even be pushing it a little bit. It might push the demolition back on the on the central, existing central admin if it was, you know, instead of July 1 and ended up being a September 1 date, depending on how that lease worked out. It, it might be ready July 1. It's so it would depend. But I would think the latest we could go is the fall town meeting.
Right. Which leaves me uncomfortable. I would rather do, make a decision earlier for my colleagues because, you know, there is time to get it ready. And if we don't demolish the building, the fields don't get built, right? There's, there are dominos. We need to place the school central office somewhere. We're not going to demolish the building before they've moved out of the building. I think Dr. Hackett would rather not have the ceiling fall in on her. So, right, so we put a, a we put a gun to our heads with respect to needs to make a decision. And what I'm trying to get to is a deadline because we can't just talk at the table. We have to make a decision. So what's your proposed deadline? End of January. So that we can have this, the discussion at town meeting will be informed by what our real plan is. Push me back if you don't think we can do that, but it's, we, that, this is why when we had the, the the summit meeting, I made sure to say, here is the consensus. And I walked around the room and asked you, do you disagree? Right? And you backed off a bit tonight. So we need to, may come to.
Oh, do I think it's possible by the end of January? Yes. I, I think it's really a question from Mr. Malloy and Mr. Cronin, whether they think it's possible by the end of January, because they would hate to have us have another meeting and not have any answers to the questions we've phrased or, or put forward tonight. And, and again, I, I think there's some this is a financial decision. Plain and simple. We're talking about office space. I mean, this is, this is not
Rocket.
Rockets, yeah. So we're, we're looking at should they go here? Should they go there? What's the cheaper method? And what are the dominos? You know, there's, there is community impact to it, but right now I'm looking at trying to put this in the best location for the lowest amount of money. Period. So we just need that, you know, details and that. We're not the experts at this table to answer that question. And I would hate to see us rush having it on an agenda again without, you know, giving the people who are going to provide us with the information time to do that.
So, Mr. Pata, I would just point out that we only have two more meetings in January. So I was going to suggest perhaps our first meeting in February would be a slightly more reasonable, giving us an extra bit of time.
Right.
Mr. Malloy?
And it, and it may depend on the statutory requirement for advertising for real estate, I believe, but may need. And I just texted Carolyn real quick, but I'm not going to have an answer for you tonight. But mostly for real estate, you have to advertise in the central register for six weeks. And so I don't know that we can make, we might make the end of February. But I don't know that we could make the end of January.
All right. Now, so end of February, you asked me what, my colleagues asked what I would like. I would have liked to have decided in November. So
How about this? How about if I put a schedule together and include it in my weekly update to the board this Friday?
Sounds good. With that, I'm going to just pass on any motion at this point. And we'll, we'll expect to have that at our meeting. Our next meeting. All right. So this 15-minute item is now done. We'll move to the second item on the agenda, which is discuss the potential location of a dog park. Mr. Malloy?
So we're talking about leasing some space for a dog park. So there are three parcels that were identified by Recreation, our Public Works Department and our Conservation Department looked at all of the land we owned, and they came up with three parcels that we had provided to the board a few months ago. And in order to move this forward now, we want to work with one architectural firm. And we're seeking to apply for a grant program during 2024. And we can't apply for that grant program unless we have a specific site that we're going to be applying for. And so there are three sites. One is identified as the Massachusetts Avenue Site. One is the Blossom Street Site, and the other one is the Wyman Road Site. And I don't know if Kim can maybe put those, starting with the Massachusetts Avenue Site on the TV? It's not easy to see. So I'll try to describe this as best I can. It's the parcel adjacent to Tower Park in front of Seasons 4. The town owns that with the exception of a notch along the bike way. Which I think is owned by the Seasons 4 folks, I'm pretty sure. The second site is Blossom Street. And Melissa Petit is here. She's obviously, and I believe Dave Pincino is online. And I think Melissa could talk more in detail and firsthand of the discussion they had of the, some of the pros and cons of some of these sites. Some of them had some wetlands issues and access issues that might need to be discussed. And then the third, and I'll just go through the three sites, then perhaps Ms. Petit can discuss the pros and cons. And the last one is on Wyman Road. Which, as you can see from this map, is directly behind a number of houses we do own. I believe the frontage lot and the second to last lot on the left-hand side of the parcel that fronts onto Wyman Road. Maybe Ms. Petit can just talk about some of the pros and cons, starting off with the Mass Ave site.
Sure. Melissa Petit, Director of Recreation. We landed on these three sites. We mean, myself, Dave Pincino, Karen Mullins. There is a list of approximately 300 town-owned parcels that are often referenced. So we went through each location and of those 300 parcels, these three were the most possible. Each has their challenges and each has things that are beneficial to them, starting with the one that's on the screen now on Mass Ave. It's the most centrally located. It's along the bike way. It would have access to water. It would allow for additional parking. So that piece that would require the least amount of permitting. There would be, need to be some discussions with Historic and some other things that take place on the other end of that parcel. But in terms of other permitting, that would be the least challenging from what we could tell to date. For the next site, if we go to, I think, can you, yep, that one is Blossom. That parcel is actually a really nice site. It's a little deceiving in this picture. If you, if you look at the 3D on Google, the, the portion of this parcel that would be used actually looks like it's the extension of someone's backyard. It's very difficult to see the property line. Where the property line ends is basically where the, the property is no longer groomed, and then it turns into where the town parcel is. There is a little bit of conservation as you go fur- further down Blossom. There's some access to water here. There would be no parking here at all, which we think would be an issue as well as the closeness to the, the property, the residence homes. And then the third parcel, which is on Wyman Road, that's Baskin Park. At one time, it was an active recreation resource. In fact, there's still asphalt and a basketball hoop there with deteriorating backboard. But that is landlocked. You, in order to get to that, you have to walk through conservation. So this would require an intensive amount of permitting through conservation and but in terms of the size of the lot and the location and impact on a butters, this would be the best location for something like that. However, without the approval of conservation, the parking would, would not be something that would be feasible here in terms of the location. It's on a bend of a street and the, the houses are quite settled there.
Thank you, Ms. Petit.
Just a clarifying question.
Ms. Berry has a queue first?
Same clarifying question. I thought Baskin was the second piece there, not the piece that's highlighted, where the playground actually is.
Baskin is the one around, is that one on 128?
So I thought it was the next piece over.
No, it's the blue, inside the blue. Yeah.
All right, Mr. Sandin?
So Ms. Petit, you were talking about the Blossom Street. You were talking about the access. So is the access from Blossom Street or is it from the Troughton Path?
It's on Blossom, actually. Yes. So if you are going down Blossom, it, it's on your right-hand side. And about halfway down is a fire hydrant across the street.
Okay, thank you. Mr. LaCente?
So in the Mass Ave parcel, thank you, Ms. Petit. First of all, thank you all for putting the time into, to narrow this down. It does not sound like a fun process to come up with 1% options. With that said, what is the parking situation at Mass Ave? Would that be that people would park on Mass Ave to get to the property? And, because I would assume we don't want people parking in the Seasons 4 parking lot.
Right. Based on that square footage, it appears that we would be able to add two to four spaces, including one or two of them being accessible based on the plot of land. But that would be what the consultant would do based on the design review and really put together all of this specifically for each location. Because it will require fencing. It, it, there's a lot of things that come along with a dog park.
In a similar line on the Blossom Street, people theoretically, you said no parking at Blossom Street?
It would be street parking.
Parking, okay. But that looks like that's a fair number of street parking spots.
It is. It's not a, a, a very wide piece of, of, of street. And then it does turn into conservation where you see it opens up into that larger piece on the right.
And just a, one more question. Has there been any discussion with any of the neighborhoods of any of these three parcels?
No, we came to you first. Yes.
Thank you.
So Ms. Hay?
So, Ms. Petit, I'm just playing with our GIS here. And if you go back to the the Baskin Playground, Kim, if you can zoom back to that. Sorry. So on the lower side on Wyman, on, yeah, on Wyman, there's that one little lot there that doesn't have a house on it. That is also town-owned land. Would that be our access point?
That is, and that's conservation.
And that is conservation. So we can't actually use that as well, we can use it as what? Let me put that in the affirmative.
In the past, it was used as a footpath. DPW would go in and they would maintain over the years after the park was closed for a variety of reasons. It was prior to my time, but from what I understand, it was a financial decision to not replace the playground there and continue to have it as an active location. That space, the footprint obviously wasn't used as much. And so the wetlands have now basically taken over the space. But in talking with Karen, it would not be something that the Conservation Commission would approve a road, but possibly a boardwalk for people to walk in to get to the non-wetland area. But that would still pose a problem for parking.
Thank you. Because my other question had been the adjacent parcel to the right, which does have frontage on Grove Street, also seems to have a fair amount of marsh or bog on it.
It's a very steep, steep drop.
Okay, I've only been from this side. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Sandin? So I have a question for the town manager. And, and I just want to start with maybe framing this whole thing, just so for people who are haven't been following along for a year or so in this whole process, that this is a result of the participatory budgeting process, correct?
That's correct.
And this was in the participatory budgeting process identified as how?
I believe 85,000.
Right. And so the, my, my, and, and this was the last item of the priority list for the participative budgeting, I think. I think we had to go and approve an extra $5,000 to get this in. But anyway, my question is the participatory budgeting. So we originally estimated $85,000 and people voted saying that they thought $85,000 is a reasonable amount of money. Now we're looking at $300,000. My question I have in my mind, I'm not yet to my question for the town managers, would people have approved $300,000 as opposed to $85,000? Would they have voted for this at all? My question for the town manager is is it possible to approve this contingent upon getting the grant financing so that we don't have to commit ourselves to spending more than the $50,000 or, or the, whatever's been already approved? Can we, can we have a motion that is contingent upon getting the grant financing?
Well, it would be contingent anyway, because the board would have to approve either additional ARPA funds or go to, going to town meeting, although I think Ms. Petit could probably address what the value of the grant portion of the process would be.
Sure. So the grant is through the Stanton Foundation, and that strictly grants to dog parks or similar. Notably, that foundation is planned to close at the end of this calendar year. So it's a short window for us to begin the application process and learn if we would be awarded. But at the time of the participatory budget, Mr. Pincino and myself did share that there's, it would be nearly impossible to build a dog park for $85,000, regardless of town property or not, just in terms of building it and building it the regardless of town property or not, just in terms of building it and building it the right way. And I think that's one of the things that we've learned along the way, that many communities may have a dog park, but it may not it's not probably the dog park that we would want here in terms of safety and maintenance and all of that. So we have the 85 approved through the participatory budget. The quote for the design of the property was just under 40,000. So that's if we moved forward to see on these three properties, that's that's how much it would be out of the 85, and then we'd have that remaining budget if we wanted to do additional research or if we were going to hit the button or pause button or continue to apply for the grant.
Do we have any information on when we would know if we received the grant?
We actually have not begun the application process because it will include a location.
So Ms. Petit? Is is there a staff preference? If not a recommendation, a preference? Because none of these look like they're easy.
I don't think that staff want to make a preference on that. You know, I think knowing the pros and the cons and the ones that are important to have any outdoor recreation facility is always easy access, universal access, parking, access to water, those types of things. You know, it may be helpful to socialize it with the committees or boards that are going to have to approve. But if we do want to get to the next step, I would say the onboarding of the consultant to look at these three properties to better understand how how deep the the permitting will need to be at each location for conservation or or historic or whatever it may be. And that would allow the town to begin to socialize it with through some community engagement to see if these three locations would even be welcome in those three neighborhoods.
Right. So colleagues, as we try to come up with a decision, my personal preference would have been from a central location perspective, I would have preferred the Mass Ave site. But I see that as being problematic on many fronts, not least of which is approval with the HDC for putting a dog park there and interference with reenactments that occur there. I think it would be difficult, even though I think from a functional perspective, even though it's small, it would be the best given its access from the bike path and from the street. So I I'm left with essentially Wyman Road as being the only option in my mind that satisfies enough of the requirements, knowing that that would still require conservation to find a suitable access and recognizing that we're not going to have an accessible or accessible parking spot right next to the dog park. It would be on the street. But it seemed the least worst. Anybody have a concurring or different opinion?
To to me, I was looking at Baskin as a problem because there's no water and then it's wet. And I'm looking at Baskin. It says there's no access to water on the and it's in the wetlands. So that that was what I was looking at as as problematic on Baskin.
Ms. Hey?
I was also just going to add, and I I think I did say this initially when we approved this list. It was only about a year or two ago that Bedford had a very, very uncomfortable, long conversation about placement of a dog park in a neighborhood and the abutting homeowners were not at all in favor. So I'm I'm also looking at these with an eye to how many homes are directly adjacent to these spaces. And frankly, as someone who, you know, I don't personally own a dog. My son has one and comes to visit every once in a while, but you know, I I can understand what some people would would feel about having people coming through with lots of dogs. I don't know. But I'm I'm sensitive to that. And, you know, to some extent, that also had me leaning towards the Mass Ave site. But I I hear your concern, Mr. Pato, about whether or not we would be able to have permission. I think it goes to how much infrastructure we're talking about putting there. If we're not really building in a lot of infrastructure, maybe it's a conversation to have with the HDC just as a what do you think level conversation as opposed to an official. I don't know.
Mr. Sandin?
So I came into the meeting tonight thinking we had to make a decision on one of these three, and I thought I just heard Ms. Petit say, and maybe I misunderstood, that she's just needing authority to further explore the three sites. Which which do we have to do tonight?
Further explore one site. Is that correct?
We could ask the consultant to explore all three. And I mean, based on their quote and the the funding that we have available.
Thank you for that clarification, Mrs. Barry and then Mr. Lucente.
So as someone who owns a dog, who frequents dog parks, and I've been at many of them in the area, some are in residential neighborhoods, some are not. The ones on the Cape are fantastic because there's a lot more land on the Cape and they're more recent. Some have water, some don't. I I don't think Tower Park is an appropriate location for a dog park. The other two, not really wild about them. Don't tell my dog that because he really wants a dog park. But that's where it gets hard. Like, which neighborhood are you going to pick? You know, for me, I, you know, I we have some land on Hartwell Ave. I think Hartwell Ave might be a place. I also wonder about part of the backside of the cemetery or by the dog, the dog. We don't call it.
Dog pound?
The animal shelter, animal shelter, appropriate language, animal shelter. If we might be able to fit something in there, not trying to undo work that's already been done, but I I hear the challenge to this, but I don't think Tower Park's appropriate.
Mr. Lucente?
Just to clarify, we also have a time limit because this was ARPA funds. We we cannot overanalyze this for too long and and waste precious time and resources just to get to the end and say, oh, we time's up. So I I'm very there's a lot of reasons right now in my head that I'm thinking, none of these are a good idea. And we should hold the plug on this in its current form and perhaps look for, as Ms. Barry pointed out, a different solution, but it's not going to come out of ARPA if it if it's a year from now. So
Right. So
That's how I'm feeling.
So I was also quite concerned about putting it in a neighborhood. And I don't know if any of you saw this, a neighboring community put a dog park in a in a neighborhood. And then a year later, they were forced to put signs on the dog park saying, do not allow your dogs to bark, which is an elected leader solution to a problem that doesn't really solve anything. And I don't really want to be in that position a year from now.
Thank you, Mr. Shandy. So I think I'm hearing from the board a consensus that none of these locations really are suitable. I think the implication from that is this is outside the ARPA-funded participatory budgeting project. And what I'm struggling with in my mind right now is whether or not we take a vote on that just to close the door on this and leave it open. I think, yeah, I'm just trying to decide if it was in scope, but I, yeah, it is. So I'm going to move that we find none of these locations suitable and will defer any action on the participatory budgeting ARPA-funded dog park. Ms. Barry for a second?
Second, but he's going to wake me up at 3:00 AM.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. None. It's 5-0. Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
And thank you for the residents who brought this to us. Participatory budgeting, sometimes there is no workable solution. All right, moving on to item number three, we're going to review the Lexington Council Arts request for paint on additional town-owned utility boxes. Colleagues, are there? Mr. Polterszyski, are you online? Good. Can you just give us an introduction to this and let the board respond? You should be, Mr. Polterszyski, you should be able to turn on your mic and video.
Thank you. The background is we have painted a number of utility boxes in the past as if you all know, I think we're at 15 right now, and we're proposing to paint an additional three this calendar year. And I'll I'll run through the the locations of the three and talk about the the specifics associated with each location. One is at Waltham Street and Brookside Ave, which is the the turnoff for the Clark School. There's a light there and the box controls that light. I think that's sort of the that's the most straightforward of the three. Number two is Mass Ave at Worthing. That's essentially the corner of Hastings Park. There's an old utility box there. And there's a newer one that's replaced it. We're proposing to paint the the new one. And yeah, that's that. And the third one is right smack in the center of town in front of the CVS, Mass Ave at Waltham. And that'll be a very prominent location and we probably need to reach some kind of understanding and accommodation with HDC regarding that. We've done that in the past with some of the other boxes. But this one is probably a little bit different in nature. The other wrinkle on this one is that it's still under warranty. And and not clear exactly when the warranty period is up, but we would not paint it until the warranty period is is up and it will be sometime this summer. So and the other point of information about that box is that we are considering integrating a Lex 250 theme for the design of that box. And, you know, would work with the 250 committee on on that. That's all I have. I, you know, that's the proposal and ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Polterszyski. And just to be sure everybody is on the same page, this would give authorization to do the work. However, it still would be contingent on HDC approval in the center and it would be contingent on the semi-quincentennial commission's engagement on the theme.
Correct.
And and that's nothing would work be placed on a new box until the warranty issues are resolved and it's all within our own control. So any questions or comments? There's one quick comment from Ms. Hey?
I just want to say how grateful I am for this project. I really, really enjoy it. I have for you looked at other communities sort of enviously, and I want to just express my gratitude to you and to the Arts Council for bringing this forward and continuing to plug away at it. So thank you.
Well, thanks for those words of support. We appreciate it and we really enjoy doing this.
Right, thank you. Taking one comment from the public?
Just very quickly, Don McKenna, 9 Hancock Street. I too am very grateful for the work that they're doing on this, but I did want to point out think it was mentioned that one of the locations is in the HDC. Actually, Hastings Park is as well. So you want to just make sure that gets covered. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Our work with HDC has sort of been of the nature that if it's not in a central location, then what they mean is, you know, anything from the green to I'm not exactly sure what they mean, but but, you know, if it's a more peripheral location in in the historic district, and this one is, I think, at at a remote at the edge of the historic district, they're much more accommodating as to how we do it and, you know, the design and that sort of thing. But this one in the center will be a different amount. But I appreciate you pointing that out. I I realize that both of them are within the historic districts.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Polterszyski. And we don't want to presume what the HDC will decide, but we're sure you will work with them to find a workable solution. I'm going to see nobody with hands up remotely. I will move that we approve the request from the Arts Council to paint utility boxes L3, Mass Ave at Worthing Road, L4, Mass Ave at Waltham Street, and L6, Waltham Street at Brookside Ave, with the provision that no painting occurs to any boxes until the warranty has expired. And further that the Arts Council meet and obtain approval from the HDC and/or the Lexington Semi-Quintennial Commission as appropriate. Ms. Barry?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Say nay. It is unanimous, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number four, which is the annual town meeting. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Pato. What I would like to do, if it's okay with the board, is just we've gone through the article list. We do have a few changes that were added or or just consolidated. So I'd like to go through those and then answer any questions that there might be about the warrant itself and not go line by line. Okay, thank you. So first off, some of the articles have been moved around. As you will see, the article numbers are not official until you sign the warrant. So I just wanted to say that upfront. You will see Article 6, Appropriate for Senior Services Program, that hasn't been on for a couple of years, but the fund has diminished. So we are adding that back in this year for $15,000. Excuse me. The next one, Article 7, is Sustainable Capital Projects. And I'd like to ask Ms. Kostnov, she has a an overview about that particular article.
Thank you, Ms. Kostnov.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. So what we have done here is actually created a new article that you haven't seen on a pass warrant for sustainable capital projects. There were two capital requests that were proposed in the FY25 budget. One is for a study, a feasibility study of whether or not solar canopies could be added at Lincoln Fields. And then the other was a request for a EV charger. And so rather than having those sort of separate under facilities or public works, what we're looking to do is just combine anything that's sort of sustainable related either to solar, EV chargers, things like that, under one article, just so that they're kind of centrally together. And this will give a little bit more coordination to the Sustainability Director going forward and allow people to kind of see those types of projects in one place. So we still have to discuss what the motion will look like, if there will be one overall, like total money request or sub items based on what was originally proposed in the capital plan. But we do think that this article being laid out this way gives us some flexibility on how to request this going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Kostnov. Colleagues, any questions about that? That seemed to make sense. Thank you. Mr. Sandin?
My definite, my question is just on the definition of capital. When we have a study, I don't really normally think of that as a as a capital item. Maybe I'm missing it or something.
So, Mr. Pato, through you. Sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Kost.
So we do often fund studies out of capital. Usually, the intention is that they are going to lead to design and construction phases after the fact. But we can do studies, feasibility studies through capital.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Oxtel?
Thank you. And the last update is Article 46, which is a royal family invitation to the 250th celebration. So we added that in at the end of last week upon request. We clarified that, yes, in the warrant article. So it's the wording has been tweaked a little bit to invite the specific royal family.
Thank you.
So that I don't know if anybody has questions specifically about articles. I have a couple of other things after that.
So members of the board, any any questions? Anything you want to make sure you see before we sign the warrant? And I'll just put a reminder about the the noise article to make sure we get some information on the availability of leaf blowers. I'll just put a reminder about the the noise article to make sure we get some information on the availability of leaf blowers. So we can decide whether or not that portion will stay on the warrant. Anything else? Ms. Axel, you can keep going.
Thank you. So the next item, and we just to respond, we are working on that request. The next item is to ask the select board. I am working on presentation schedules. There are a lot of presentations that I am trying to fit in your. In your meeting schedule. They are starting January 22nd. A remind, when you. Sign the warrant, you'll also hear from a lot of. Presenters at that point. A reminder that we ask that you watch the video and look at all the materials, which will be up and running. Ahead of time, so we'll use that timeframe. The first January 22nd will probably not be that way, but. Details to come on that one, but moving after the 22nd. That's how we'll move forward. Also. If you have any in particular that you would like to see presented, please email them, email me the list in the next few days. So that I can make sure my list matches with what the board needs to see. I will say. All of the citizen petitions we always bring in, and then any newer financial articles we'll bring in. But. Anyone that you send to me will make sure we'll get on the schedule.
Ms. Hay.
I think we usually get an update from either the planning director or the planning board chair as well on the various zoning articles. We include that as well.
Yes, so the planning board and all the planning articles are already scheduled for February 26. Like.
Thank you.
Do you want me to share who's already scheduled? Would that be helpful?
I think you can send that via email to the board.
No problem. I can do that. And then the last item is to ask that you discuss the letter, the moderator's request. It's in the, it's not to approve it, it's in the warrant. It's on the last page of the warrant.
Right.
It's not, we didn't, we didn't add it separately because you're not voting on that tonight. It was just part of the warrant for a discussion, not for a vote.
Right, and colleagues, again, underscoring we're not taking a vote tonight, I do want to take a straw poll with regard to calling a hybrid meeting. Because I've been getting calls from town meeting members who are trying to plan travel and they want to know, should they expect to be able to attend remotely or not? And I want to hear if anybody has an objection. The moderator is requesting a hybrid meeting. Mr. Lucente.
I just want to add, you know. It was a very helpful experiment last. For the Fall Town Meeting, and I thought it worked out well. I particularly benefited from hybridness being midair for the. Second or first night of the Fall Town Meeting. So I I thought it worked out really well and was well run from up in the air. And then the next night it was on the ground and I thought it worked well as as well that way. So I would support us. And the straw vote to say, yes, this is a good idea.
Right, does anybody unlikely to support a hybrid meeting? Good. I will get back to town meeting members who've asked to let them know we have, we will be taking our vote when we vote the warrant article. But the board has not expressed any opposition to a hybrid meeting. Thank you.
Maybe post that to the TMMA list rather than just individual town meeting members.
As long as you are comfortable because we didn't take a vote. Okay.
It's our intent to vote at that.
Got it. Very good. Ms. Axel, anything else?
That is it for me. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, colleagues, it is quarter nine. We have Mr. Malloy's review. We've discussed that in front of him as we edited. Do you need a break or shall we keep going? Keep going, very good. All right, so this is to review and approve the Town Manager's 2023 Performance Evaluation. The draft of the final edit of the evaluation is in the packet. This, as we agreed at our last meeting, I took the materials that we had received from each member that we discussed in open session here. And condensed it into a a single narrative. I did ask Ms. Hay to join me in that edit session to make sure I didn't miss something. And I asked the members of the board if, in reading that final version, if you have any. Any concerns, issues with it, or you felt I missed something that was important to you. Did anybody find anything like that? Ms. Barry?
I did not, but I have a question.
Sure, we'll come right back to you. Anybody else? Great, Ms. Barry.
Just a process question. Under number four, it talks about the board will be setting specific goals for Mr. Malloy. Is that somewhere in the timeline?
Yes, so as we discussed, I was waiting on the the consolidated set of goals from our. From our offsite session for goal setting. I have a rough draft of that from the consultant that I got on Friday night. I expect a final version of that to be available to us, which we will look at, and from that, create the specific tasks, goals for for Mr. Malloy. So I expect that. Early February because the our next meeting is booked.
Okay, so again, it's gonna be like six months, which isn't fair to him.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? So I'm going to move that we approve the Town Manager's Performance Evaluation as. Included in the packet and to place it in Mr. Malloy's personnel file. Is there a second? They moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is unanimous. So I want to thank the board and I want to thank Mr. Malloy for bearing with us on this process. This is not a easy process for any of us. I think there is a lot of specific information in the material. One of the things that is included is a reference to last year's review and and the board's. Continued interest in comments we made last year, as well as the additional comments from this year. And I want to make sure that we we. Acknowledge that. In your summary of the accomplishments of the town, there are significant accomplishments that have been. Made by it under your administration. And that we appreciate that work and your acknowledgement of the collaborative effort. Of town staff that it takes to do all that, which we agree with completely. And we look forward to another year with. Difficulties in in challenges that are overcome by by. By your administration. And colleagues, if you have any additional comments? Ms. Hay.
Really sideways, but just make the point since we're in this conversation that for those of you who haven't already, tomorrow at noon, the MMA is holding a lunchtime one hour how to do appraisals and goal setting. I've signed up. I would love to see the rest of you there.
Mr. Lucente.
I just want to acknowledge and thank Mr. Malloy for. It is a difficult position to be in. A, when you have five people managing, you know. And our roles. But also five people that care a lot about the town and how it's running, not always agreeing on a specific path forward. But, you know, thank you for your continued navigation through that. And look forward to another year.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't know, Mr. Malloy, did you want?
The only thing I want to add is that I appreciate all of the comments. There's one theme from previous. Evaluations dealing with continuing to improve communications that I think. I want to have a more robust discussion on exactly. What some of those expectations are for the board because we've started. As you know, we've looked at two-way communications tools and we haven't been happy with any of them. We have one that we now have. That's available from software that we already paid for that our IT director has identified as a potential, but. If it's something that we end up using, it's something that I want to make sure meets with the goals. Or the expectations, not really goals, but expectations board are. The other thing I just want to comment on is that Ms. Axel and I had the opportunity to speak with John Wortman today more about. Or a lot about the work we're doing with the staff, with John Wortman. But also a little bit about the the goal setting process the board went through and. What would be the best way to make sure that there's really good communication going on between what we're doing with those goals? And what the board's involvement is, since you each have sort of a champion. Goal. There's seven goals, overarching goals. And I envision that there will be specifics. Specific staff that are assigned to work on certain aspects of those goals. And how we might be able to set up regular ongoing sessions and then have a report back. As we discussed with seven goals, you could essentially have two report backs every year. So that you had some updates. So if Mr. Lucente is involved in the center. Vitality. Goal. That there's a report coming back from economic development, Mr. Lucente, myself, and whoever else is involved in it. Coming back to the full board on a regular basis, perhaps as part of the monthly work sessions that we do. There are seven goals, and I know that's 14 months, but we could probably do two. In one month and then one every other month to try to keep it so that the board is constantly. Aware of what's going on as far as successes and progress towards the ultimate goals on on the seven goals that you set. And so we'll be working on setting something up once the goals are finalized. And then you tell me what goals are mine. We'll figure all of that out and put up a more robust discussion on goals. So it's not. Okay, we've adopted our goals and now it's two months before we're meeting with a facilitator again. How did we do? And so this way it'll be something that's ongoing.
Very good. Thank you. All right, colleagues. Ms. Barry? You are pumped. All right, before we adjourn announcements for the end of meeting, the next scheduled work session of the select board will be on Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, at 6:30 PM via hybrid participation. And the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board is on Monday, January 22nd, again at 6:30 PM via hybrid participation. And with that, I move that we adjourn. Ms. Barry?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say nay. It is unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you.